So every mumbling we have now.
Save, save for posterity? I, I tend to forget that when we're in the middle of our meetings that we're being recorded and it's gonna be posted on the internet.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's a little bit. Being put on the internet is kind of one thing, cause it's just everywhere, but. You know, like as far as like work goes, you know, at the job or something like that. You know, if, if you're doing something and you know that kind of like, everything you do is like monitored or, or tracked or whatever. There's kind of, I don't know, it's a. I like it if you know you're able to act and everything is kind of like, you know, visible and out there.
Right, well, that was my, my whole working career. You know, I always, again, I worked for government, so we assumed everything, every chat, every email was. You know, discoverable or FOIA-able, uh, you know. Would, would potentially see the light of day and be broadcast far and wide. I mean, that's the, you know, the old adage is. Don't type anything you wouldn't want to see on the front page of the New York Times.
Right, yeah, and then, and there's a certain, uh. Freedom in that, you know, or like, I don't know, freedom or like, uh, comfort, I found.
Yeah, I, I mean, I never, I always thought it was, uh. Just, I mean, it's something you should learn as a kid, right? I mean, kind of the, you know, uh. If you don't have anything nice to say, don't say it. You know, if you don't have anything smart to say, don't say it.
That's right. Or at least thoughtful, right?
Yeah, right. But a lot of people don't get that message.
Yeah. Deacon, how are you? Uh, if you were saying hi to us, Deacon, you are muted.
You look like you're peeking over a wall.
Are, are we good now?
Yep, we're good.
Okay.
Good evening, sir. Um, oh, there's Michael.
You're fenced in, Nathan.
Yeah, I'm actually fenced out. That's, uh, behind me is kind of like a playroom area.
Yeah.
And so that was, uh, it's somewhat obsolete at this point, but it's, uh. It might still contain rows, I guess, but anyway.
I don't know. I think you probably tried to get in and they didn't want you in, so they kept you out.
Yeah, you know, it's. It's true. Hi, Mike, how are you?
Okay. Is Mateo not coming?
Mateo was not coming.
Oh, my gosh. Okay, that's good to know. So we could, we can help you if you want with the admitting.
Yeah, well, I was gonna try and make you a co-host and it only gives me the option to make you a host.
Oh. That's weird. Why, do you want me to host and you can welcome and then I'll see if there's a way of doing it?
Well, you know, I think, uh, oh, here we go, host tools.
If you get, if you go next to me, you know, and you see the three dots to the right, it should, it should say make a co-host. At least that's normally how it works.
Does make host. That's all right, I wanna just, uh. Okay, so. We do have form at the moment. You know what, Mike, I am just gonna make you a host. Um. So that you can monitor. Yes, alright, so you're now the host.
Okay, cool.
And, uh, so I don't know if I can even see the waiting room anymore now. I can, I can still reclaim host, but.
Oh, that's good.
Um.
That's weird that you can't have a co-host. We'll have to look into that.
Okay. Seven oh four, I'm gonna call this meeting of the Schutzbreg planning board to order. And I'm gonna note that the meeting is being recorded. Good evening, Ashley, how are you?
Um. I'm okay. Good evening, how are you?
Good evening. Um, I thought I had seen, um. Yeah. Okay.
I thought I saw Robert too.
You thought you saw Robert, yeah, and now he's not, uh, okay.
I'll keep an eye out for him.
Yeah. All right, um, would anyone like to make public comment?
Well, my son will pop in at any minute and I make, I have to make sure to put food in his stomach, but. I will be listening and hear and can, uh, take part as needed, just giving you all a heads up.
Okay.
Melissa is here, she just joined. I know she has public comment, but.
Yeah, that's me, Mike, Michael.
Yeah, no, I know who you are.
Hi, Melissa.
I know Melissa, M.O.
Yeah, you know, well known.
I see, um. Yep, uh, Jeff has joined us now as well, that's, uh. Good evening, Jeff.
Uh, good evening, can you hear me?
We can hear you, yes, and, uh, you can kind of, oh, there, okay, now I can see you too. Okay, um, anyone else for a public comment or, uh? No. Okay. And do we have anyone here that's for, uh, landowner education and guidance? No, okay. All right.
Hey, I, did you, uh, Nathan, did you start recording?
I did, yes.
Okay.
Thank you. I jumped into the meeting, you know, like twenty minutes early, just cause I was. Afraid it was, everything was gonna crash and I, uh, just didn't want to have like twenty minutes of blank recording at the start of it, so I paused it. But we're recording and, uh, next up, we have, uh, minutes from, uh, twenty-five, uh. January thirteenth and twenty twenty-five, February tenth. Do I hear, uh?
I did, but you didn't hear me.
Oh, oh, okay.
I'll move to approve the minutes of January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Um, I second.
All right. Do we have any, any discussion?
Um, I didn't realize Mateo was not gonna be here, but I think. In the version I'm looking at, there's some yellow highlights and. Some of those were mine, so just, uh, if that is actually true, I just wanted to let you know that I was the source of the yellow highlights.
Okay.
But I don't know if I, if I was the source of all of them, but just as an FYI.
Are you looking at a version that's on the, uh?
I thought I opened the one that you sent.
Okay, huh.
I could be wrong.
No, I mean, I, uh, I just don't see any yellow highlights on January thirteenth, but.
Hold, hold on.
Here we. I was saying, January thirteenth, seven minutes.
I always wondered. Well, one of the things, Nathan, that's worth noting, one of the edits for the February meeting is that the date is wrong. Cause they both say January thirteenth.
Oh, okay. Um. Okay. Yeah, I see that, I see that I have, uh. Okay, yeah, yeah, I see, I see that, okay, so now if I'm. Okay, yeah, I'm still not seeing yellow here, but I don't know if you wanna. Share your screen, just to make sure everyone is looking at the same, uh.
Sure. That, I mean.
Or, uh.
That's not the definitive, but this is, you guys see this?
No.
Nope.
Yeah, it's a black screen. It says that you started screen sharing, but we can't see anything.
Yeah, okay, let's try that again. Stop sharing, stop sharing. Start again.
Uh, Michael, it said double click to start share screening, uh, share the screen. On the message that we got.
Well, I do see a little bit of yellow. My apologies.
You see it now?
No.
Really, weird.
I see it. Okay. Um.
And I think.
Yeah, I, I see the yellow.
Yeah. And I think this is the accurate January one. I think the other one that's labeled January is the February one.
Yeah. Okay. So, I mean, you know, anything, um, does anyone have any other fur- further discussion, uh, other than that? All right, um. So Ashley is, uh, we have, uh. Okay, um, I'm, uh, I'm just gonna call, call her all with, uh, the board members that we have here, uh, Takeara.
Aye.
Um, Raymond.
Aye.
Uh, Bonner.
Aye.
Weston.
Aye.
And, um, I'm on I, so the minutes are approved.
You didn't call my name.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ashley.
That's okay.
Aye.
Uh, thank you. Um. All right, excellent. All right, so, uh, that's good, um, and then moving on to February.
Uh, oh, I will move to approve the minutes of February tenth, two thousand twenty-five.
I'll second it.
Okay.
They, they labeled January thirteenth in the actual minutes?
Yeah.
So we'll obviously, uh. Make sure that they get, uh. I guess, you know, to clarify that, Robert, if you go onto the, the drive, they're la- they're labeled correctly as, uh, twenty twenty-five. Dash two dash ten, but then when you open the document and up at the top, it says January thirteenth.
Okay.
If that is, uh, helpful. All right, any, uh, so we have a, a motion and, uh, a second, right? We have any other, uh, discussion?
I had one additional edit, which is really, uh, actually two. Um. And then it just a general comment, so we, I think we should suggest to Mateo that he numbered the pages. That would be good, but on the third page, which George Re- Reimer points out. You see that one?
Um, the third page that starts, uh, with, uh, in, uh, bird or bat kills?
Uh.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Reimer points out, that's the old turbine, turbine, that bitch.
Yep.
So the fifth paragraph, which starts with my name, Takeara recalls.
Okay.
Second line, it should say balloons to check sightlines. The sightlines was wrong.
Yeah, yeah.
And then two paragraphs down, um, again, where it starts with my name, not that I look for paragraphs to start with my name. But, um, the third paragraph, uh, the third line says reaches sixty-five decibels. It just should be Monroe as opposed to Monroe's.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay, um, so it, do you have, uh, have you made a, a copy of this document with just these changes that you can, um?
I, I sent it to, uh, Mateo, so he should have them.
So you sent that to Mateo and, uh?
As a word document.
As a word document, okay. Um, by chance to, uh, well, yeah, that's fine, so I think, um.
I could change it in the online one, I just didn't want to mess with anything.
Right, I, uh. I was thinking ju- just to. Well, yeah, that's fine, so we'll just make sure Mateo knows which document we approved, which is that one. And, uh, you know, with those revisions we agree on and, uh, I will call the roll. Um. Uh, Pycroft?
Aye.
Okay, um. Raymond?
Abstain, I wasn't present.
Okay, uh, Weston?
Aye.
Um. Uh. Uh, Bonner?
Aye.
Uh, Takeara?
Aye.
And, uh, I'm on I. So we're good there, excellent, we can move on. I left the minutes a little bit shorter, just because we have a lot to, to go through. Next on our agenda is, is bylaw amendments. And to just, there's a few different things that are packed into this item here, right, but as we all know, we've been. Working on several different amendments, uh. And recently, uh, last week. We sent, uh, I sent some to town council for review. Dealing with accessory dwelling units and. The, uh, tiny houses amendment and a, uh, regulation of, uh, short-term rentals for ADUs. Is kind of a separate item for Donna's review. Now, uh, we'll go through each of those more or less at high level, but there are some things that I wanna focus on. Kind of specifically before we do that, uh, that I think the board should clarify. And the first one of those is the question of regulating. Short-term rentals for accessory dwelling units.
Do you want me to share this, Nathan, just?
Yeah, actually, um.
I got it right here.
Okay, yeah.
Make it bigger. Everybody go.
There it is. I think it's, it's just taking a minute to kind of, uh. Go through this. So. You know, part of what we're doing with the ADU amendments is trying to bring our bylaw into compliance with, with state law. And some members of the board have. You know, indicated that we should, uh. Also regulate short-term rentals for a protected use ADU or ADUs in general as they, uh, apply in our bylaw. But this is not required to be done by, by state law. State law does explicitly say that this kind of regulation for ADUs is permissible. Uh, but there's no requirement for us to, to make this, uh, regulation. So tonight, I would. You know, we've had some discussion about this in the past, but I don't, I don't know that we came to any. Firm conclusion on it. So I'd like to open the floor for. Anyone who would like to. State their, uh, their thoughts on, on this question.
Uh, I'll just kick it off, not to, not to advocate one way or the other, but if you look at this, um. What you'll see is that there's two sections that are cited, there's the three point three dash two. And then the four dot four dash two, so. The four, the four point two dash two is about ADUs, and so as Nathan said, we are allowed in the new law to. Um, prohibit short-term rentals, which are defined in state law, um. It's anything less than thirty-one days and it has that little bit of description, it's basically, um, I just pulled that out. The interesting thing that I think Nathan and I, well, Nathan discovered it and then he and I discussed it, but. There is currently in our bylaws, something that says that renting rooms to lodgers, boarders, tourists shall be permitted as an accessory use, provided. That no separate cooking facilities are maintained and provided for more than three and more than three rooms are rented. Which seems a little confusing because the ADU statute says that you have to have. Separate cooking facilities, um, so just trying to make those align. Um, but right now the three point three dash two exists in our bylaws and the accessory dwelling units. Or the short-term rentals does not, if that's helpful.
Well, one note on free, on the existing language we have in our bylaw. I was thinking about this more and it says renting rooms to lodges, right? So it, it seems to me that probably the intent of that was. Uh, or at least the, like, the context of this language is, you know, within a dwelling, like, if you're in a, if, if you're in a dwelling. You can rent, you know, if you have two rooms and you live and you, you sleep in one, you can rent the other one to someone. But there can't be a separate cooking facilities. So I, I kind of take this, you know, possibly the intent of this to be, you know, like, you're not setting up. Like a makeshift kitchen in a, in the upstairs of your house where you're having some, some boarders stay so that they can cook their food up there. Or maybe setting up, uh. You know, uh, hot plates or something like that, which, I mean, I'm not sure if that's what it meant. But it. I don't think this would be applicable to if somebody had a, a multi-family unit and they were renting out one side of it as a vacation home or something like that. That, that separate unit can't have a kitchen in it. You know, it's not a separate kitchen per se, it's a completely separate unit, right, and it's not renting rooms, it's, it's renting an entire dwelling. So I don't think that this language would apply in that sense. It is confusing, though. Um.
With your interpretation, that might be, we don't have to touch it, which would make any amendment easy, cause it would just be. Do we do short-term rentals on ADUs or not? That would be the question at hand then, which is si- much simpler.
So. Does anyone else have anything, uh? Any thoughts on this?
Hey, this is Keith, where, I'm, I'm reading what's on the screen, where is the language about the cook, cooking facilities?
It's in red and, uh, struck out there.
Oh, duh, duh, okay, thanks. Yeah, I don't, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm having a hard time figuring out what the, what the intention of that one was, um. Provided, yeah, twice.
Hmm. Right. Oh, yeah, yeah, cause he crossed out the end there, yeah, we can fix that too. So getting to the more, you know, meat and potatoes of the question is, um. It, it, with our amendment for ADUs, more or less that the change that we're doing. Is removing an owner occupancy requirement for accessory dwelling units. All right, and, 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 you know, allowing the square footage to go from eight hundred to nine hundred, if it's, uh. Less than half the size of the house, right?
Nathan, can I jump in for a minute? Just, cause I think I'm gonna quote you. So when Nathan and I were talking, what, what, the reason he advocated pulling this out from the updated ADU amendment. Is that this is a little more controversial and it's not required by law, so what Nathan had said is. This could be debated on town meeting floor, floor, it could pass, it could fail, it depends on what people are thinking, but. He would suggest we, if we sep- separated it out as a separate amendment, it wouldn't endanger. The actual ADU amendment, which is what we're supposed to do, because we're supposed to comply with the law, so that was, I think, the rationale. So sorry to interrupt, but I thought you had a good point.
Thanks. All right, well, yeah, that's, uh. My question is, is why would we introduce an amendment to town meeting to, to regulate, uh, short-term rentals? Why, why would we do this?
Well, I know, the thing I will say that I mentioned to you, and I think, I think Jeff brought it up earlier, but if you think about. You can, you're allowed to put in a manufactured home as an ADU, and so one could. Build a new struc- you know, build a new structure or add on to your house and. They're by right, so if you think about the lake as an example, which is, you know, vacation friendly, um. You could all of a sudden have people putting ADUs up at the lake and doing short-term rentals, um, for Airbnb kind of things. Uh, which would create more demand on the lake, more crowding, et cetera, et cetera, so I think that, the idea it would be. Not making this so that, you know, the idea with ADUs, as far, as far as I could tell, and I think you and I discussed, Nathan, is. The state's trying, trying to create more affordable housing units for people to live in. It's not necessarily saying we, the state wants to create more, um, short-term rental revenue for homeowners. So I think that's the differentiation in my mind.
The state, that may be true that, you know, in passing the Affordable Homes Act, the state. Had the intention of, uh, creating. More affordable housing, but the state also did not go so far as to mandate that accessory dwelling units cannot. Be a short-term rental. Um. Now, uh. Does anyone else have any, anything to say about why we should do this?
This is Ashley and, um. I, I would echo the concern particularly about the lake. Um, just if we're trying to keep with the spirit of what the state intention was for this. Intention was for this. Um, I think it it's, I mean, those lots are so small and I know. I know it's going to be tricky for a lot of people to put ADUs up. Within the confines of those lots as it is, but a lot could pop up and yeah, it could be. I echo what Michael said. It could be tricky on the ecosystem of the lake and. Uh to just have people coming in and over and over again all summer. With the septics and everything, I think it could just be an issue. That said, I wish there was a, you know, I always am looking for a compromise. Like I wish we could say, well, maybe between the months of. May and October, you can. Do uh short-term rentals, but. Uh school year-ish, you can't. I don't know. That seems complicated though, and I'm not suggesting that. It just it also I I want to express that I feel for the homeowners too, because it would be a a good. Way for them to make income. Um I just don't think that that's the spirit of accessory dwelling units, you know, the the push for them.
Um, uh Jeff Weston here. Um. In my memory, also, the lake was shut down quite a bit because of E. coli. So you're adding. Uh, you know, more people there and um more stress on the septic systems and leaching fields and so forth and. Um, I don't think it'd be good for the majority of people in the lake, certainly to have it shut down more frequently. And that's it.
All right, Nathan. Yeah, I think Ashley, you guys make a good point about the uh. The septic, my first thought was the lot sizes around the lake that I don't know that there's going to be a whole lot of separate. And I don't even, I mean, even building onto some of those houses is probably uh impossible. Um, but yeah, the septic. Because if you're going to add occupancy to any building, you're going to have to have a septic system. That passes the Title V and hell, I don't think half of them pass Title V now. Um. So that may that may be the, you know, whatever we do as a planning board, it may be. Pretty limited just uh just based on the. The nature that the lake has already developed. Um. So I don't. And again, I I'm like you, if somebody wants to. And and as a frequent, not frequent, a an occasional user of Airbnbs or short-term rentals at people's houses uh. In rural settings uh. In in different places. It's it's pretty neat. So I I mean, I hate to dissuade people from coming to see Chutesbury. Um. You know, and. The fear that it's going to be college kids coming for a beer bash or something like that. I don't know. Um. I don't know how. How many college kids want to come up here and do that? They want to stay downtown. But anyway. Yeah, I I think. The lake may be less of an issue than we we fear, I guess.
Not entirely on topic. Um. Prop property can't transfer outside of families without passing Title V. So a lot of the a lot of the places at the lake now have tight tank systems.
I think any new construction at the lake would have it too, but before we get more into that, I see Melissa has her hands up. I'd like to hear from her.
I I I was just talking about, I was just going to address the closing of the lake oftentimes is actually the geese. Um, and not the septic because the tight tanks have been put in. It's much cleaner than it was. Um, and some points of my childhood. Um, the question I have I have is, and I know focusing around the lake is a because that's the most. Tight area and building. I know if you build a. A room, you have to increase your septic or your tight tank if you're adding bedrooms. So. Um, that would that would be an issue and I think would almost nullify any of the. Accessory apartments down there unless they had enough room. It's really tight. The the question I had is also, what about um? A senior citizen who becomes an empty nester wants to rent their room for visiting professor who's here three or four weeks. Or something like that. Would this negate something like that in the thinking of the other parts of town?
Well, if it was under a month. That would be a short-term rental if it was, you know. More than that. I mean. So that that's a short answer. I mean.
Yeah, I was just asking the question. I don't know that there's an answer necessarily tonight. It was just thinking of another option where. Someone might have a short-term rental. It's not an Airbnb or a one of those of those options, you know, might be more based out of. Financial necessity or um. To pay their mortgage or taxes.
I mean, I've got two middle ground ideas.
I was just gonna say, uh Melissa, under the proposed amendment. If it's just renting out a room in your house, it's not affected. But if if the room you're talking about is part of a. An accessory dwelling unit, then it. The amendment would be applicable to that and that would be prohibited by the bylaw.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Um, if we wanted to go to the middle ground, it seems like there's two things that just. Came up. One is. We could prohibit short-term rentals for ADUs. Perhaps in just. The Lake District, Lake Ola District, because. If you're allowed to limit short-term rentals, uh I mean, I think this begs. The rationale for making it a separate amendment from the ADU because. You know, can we treat this different districts differently in terms of short-term rentals? I don't, I I would think so, but I'm not sure. Um. The other thing is, I mean, to Keith's point. Maybe we don't do it this year. And see what happens because if people. You know, can't build, then practically speaking, we don't have to regulate it. It's already doing it by itself. It's just the unfortunate thing if people start wanting to do it and their neighbor did it and then we say, oh. Going forward, you can't do it. So that's sort of like the drag. You don't want to cut people off midstream.
Yeah, um. Yeah, I think. Wait and see might uh might be a good idea, you know, um. Another few things that we should consider before. Voting to put this out um to town meeting is uh. Accessory dwelling units do provide some revenue for the town. Several years back, uh I I can't. Remember the specific statute. It might be the one that Michael lists in the proposed amendment. Uh, but if if it's not that exact section, it's I think in that same chapter that has a. At town meeting, we accepted it and now um companies like Airbnb and uh VBRO uh. Have to make reporting, mandatory reporting to the state, and I think after accepting that uh part of the. General law, our assessors now have the ability to go out and get that information from the state and collect taxes on these units. So we're collecting a little bit. It's not a huge number. I think it's something like twenty thousand dollars or twenty-two thousand dollars or something like that. But it is uh it is some revenue for the town. Um, that could be impacted by this and. I mean, you know, additional consideration, um in terms of affordability, uh like uh Melissa mentioned, you know. The other the other side of that is if you have a an ADU. And you know, you can rent it out to short-term rentals uh renters. You know, that may be a preferable uh uh better alternative than renting it out full-time. You know, if if you're able to rent it out for. A few a few weeks a year and that uh brings in enough money for you to kind of stay above war, then that's that's. Helping you to stay where you are. Right? So that's a different way that they can be used and. In terms of this, you know, there's the, you know, ecological concerns down at the lake, I think uh. I don't think we have any kind of information. And we don't have any concrete information to uh. To really make that assessment that if we continue to allow ADUs, which are currently allowed, I'm sorry, um. Short-term rentals, right? I know there's already short-term rentals at the lake. Um, and short-term rentals for ADUs were not allowed. In theory, any ADUs that could be built that are built anyway. You're going to have full-time residents there instead of part-time residents so that. You know, if more people is the is potentially the problem. The long-term uh. Re- rentals are going to potentially cause that increased ecological harm over. Short-term rentals. Of course, you know, there's a question of. If ADUs are allowed, if short-term rentals are allowed for ADUs. Are there going to be more built at the lake than if they if short-term rentals were restricted? Right? That's a that's a fair question. Uh, we don't. You know, have a lot of information to assess that with. Uh, there are a lot of uh confines with. In the Lake District based on. Rules around non-conforming lots and non-conforming structures. I I think based on that, we could probably say we would not expect. ADUs to pop start popping up all over the place, you know, detached buildings or things like that. Because most of the properties down there, if you're going to do any kind of development like that, if you're talking about a special permit with the ZBA. And. I think that is uh. That covers most of what I wanted to say about that. Michael?
Yeah, I mean, the other concern that I have, this is, I mean, as a reminder. With the new state law, ADUs don't have to be owner occupied. So currently, a lot of towns, including Chutesbury, had an owner occupied requirement. So. One of the two dwellings had to be owner occupied. Right now. The way it says is you can build an ADU by right and neither of the two dwelling units have to be owner occupied. And so. You know, the concern is, I mean, Chutesbury will never be, hopefully will never be like Amherst, but you know, one of the issues down in Amherst is that. Downtown, there's just, there's very, you know, there's diminishing order occupy occupation. Um, and lots of students coming out because they can charge lots of money and the accountability of the neighborhood goes down, the accountability to the housing stock goes down, et cetera, et cetera. And so. One of the, one of the reasons I would say it's worth considering. Not having short-term rentals is because if there's no owner in either of those things and people are just, you know. You could build one just to be a cash register. Um, and granted, you know, it it is going to be the kind of people who want to go to a rural setting, but um it doesn't create consistency of. Neighbors and neighborhoods. So um it, I don't, you know, I don't think the state law was. Intended for this and it's. And I do, I mean, so you know, that's a that's a possibility. Who knows if it'll really happen. Um, but I think. Not having owner occupancy changes the dynamic significantly for what it is now. Um. And I do think. I can imagine a scenario where someone. Not at the lake, but anywhere else in town who has an ample room, builds an ADU with the idea of having an Airbnb. And then in a year or two or three, we say, hey, we're going to limit short-term rentals. And the person rightly rightly will say, I'm getting screwed, you know, so I think we'd have to allow that. Um, and you know, we'd have to have short-term, I don't know if. Short-term rentals for buildings that were built after, you know, a certain point of time because you'd have to grandfather those folks in. Otherwise, you know, they will have invested in properties and upgrading their. Homes. With the expectation of making revenue. So we'd have to, we'd have to leave it open for those folks. Um, so something to think about if we don't do it and then we change our minds later, we have to be attentive to it, but um.
I'm glad I'm glad you brought that up, Michael, because that there was. One other thing I wanted to say and and that is, I think, you know, introducing this new regulation for accessory for short-term rentals. Does carry with it a little bit of risk for the town because as of now, they're. They're very well may be accessory dwelling units that are being used to short-term rentals at the lake. Right? So if, you know, we're doing this as a zoning bylaw and we're. You know, we're saying for, you know, the use of accessory dwelling that, you know, short-term rental is prohibited. So we're making the use more restrictive. So in theory, anyone with a short-term rental. You know, should have vested rights, right? But we don't. You know, I think we would have a lot of trouble, you know, trying to sort that out possibly. And. You know, I mean, if if uh. You know, by putting this in, I mean, it it could. You know, spark some kind of uh. You know, controversy among people, whether they're in that situation or whether they want to. To do it. Um. You know, they could sue us over it, right? I mean. And uh, you know, it's introducing a more uh restrictive thing that's restricting, you know, what people can do. Um, which, you know, could. You know, I won't say this is a high risk, but you know, there is some risk there that, you know, we could um end up in. Uh, you know, occurring some legal fees over it or things like that, right? So. So we have this question, you know, do we want to wait and see? I mean, you know, I. You know, maybe. You know, we're still waiting on legal review. If the town did decide that it was uh in the in the best interest to. To rein in short-term rental. Possibly a general bylaw would be a better way to go. I don't know if that's true or not. But that would be another, that would. Come to the top of my list of questions on it.
One thing I would say is it seems to me that the text that is, the text that is being added to here is. Is about, is about an accessory use. Not, not an accessory structure. And. And then if we were going to to regulate. Um, short-term rentals of an accessory apartment, that that should be done in a different place. I mean, directly to the to the accessory apartment deal, not. Not the accessory use of a of a single-family house.
Well, yeah, I think um. The amendment that uh we have a draft of, I I think is um. Addresses the. Accessory use of an accessory dwelling, which would apply to both detached and uh. Attached accessory dwellings.
Yeah, but but that. But it's accessory, accessory. Legally recognized accessory physical arrangement. I mean, but this is really, this is real, this. The. The way this is written here, it's about a use of. Presumably of a single-family house. Not one that has a formal. You know, accessory dwelling.
Well, for the accessory dwelling. Units, it can be single-family, second, two-family and multiple dwelling, but you know, but. I'm I'm fine with not putting it forward, just so I don't know if anyone feels like I'm the one pushing for it, but. Um, I think Nathan wanted to.
With you not to do it.
Huh?
I'm agreeing with you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right, well, um. So. Is the board going to decline to uh put put a amendment forward then for this?
Well, I think that that the only the only thing that's being proposed is. Is the red stuff. The other stuff is already there.
No, all right, yeah, that's that's.
Oh, that's confusing.
Right, yeah, that's confusing. Um. The red stuff is uh. Yeah, I don't know, Michael, you want to put that up again real quick?
Yeah, I'm. I'm gonna, I was gonna change it, but I'll put it up first. Yeah, and. Yeah, I'll change it. Did you guys see that?
So. Section three point three dash two is an edit. But the four point four dash two. Is a a new. Insertion as is the definition. Right, so.
No, but three dash three dash two is in the existing zoning except for the red.
Right. With the red, the red is in there.
Yeah, this whole, this whole thing exists currently.
Yeah, but in the, but in my copy of the zoning, the red, the red language isn't printed.
Oh, no, it's 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 in there. That's where we found, that's where Nathan found it.
You're talking about that no separate cooking facilities are maintained, Deacon, or you're talking about?
Yeah, I'm talking about the cooking facilities. That isn't, that isn't in our existing. Yeah, I'm talking about the cooking facilities. That isn't, that isn't in our existing zoning.
Okay, well, uh.
How new is that?
No, it's there, it's there. The one, the most recent one that just got updated. It, it says renting rooms to lodgers, boarders of tourists shall be permitted. Permitted as accessory use, provided that no separate cooking facilities are retained and provided that no more.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's all right. We want to make sure everyone's clear.
Yeah.
Nathan, maybe we, maybe we frame it in the affirmative, which is the, the board is. Willing to. Give this a little time to play out, it will take action if need be, as opposed to declining to put it forward.
So, well, I mean, yeah, we don't, we don't need to do anything to not put it forward, so I guess we can move on. And, uh, so we've got the, we've got the other amendments, um. That's, okay, that's, that's fine. I thi- I think that's, uh. That's fine. If, uh, we can keep an eye on it and if things start, uh, becoming problematic, then we'll bring it to a town meeting and, and. And see, uh, what happens.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Um, so. It, it's driving me crazy because I don't have the bylaws in front of me, so I can't check all this stuff, but do we? Are we deciding to not bring the accessory dwelling unit bylaw at all to town meeting? Or is that something that's, we're just talking about the short-term rental piece?
Yeah, just short-term rental piece, yeah. So for.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Accessory dwelling, um, we'll talk about that and that's, uh. So we just, I just have one thing that I wanted to decide on, the accessory, uh, dw- uh, dwelling, um, amendment. So, Michael, you can share that now.
Okay.
Because that's where we're gonna spend most of the rest of the time on it.
Yep. Uh, give me half a second. Sorry, I thought it was open, but it's not. Maybe that, hold on.
I've got it open, if, uh.
Yeah, I, so I think I got it.
You got it?
Yeah, I'll just do it from. What you shared. Well, no, if you got it, go for it. I'm gonna have to, looking for the, here it is. Okay.
There you go.
Yeah. Um, sorry for the delay.
That's all right. We, we need to decide. Have a, have a distance, um, maximum distance for any new detached structures.
I think there's a couple of other small things, but you only want to do the high-level stuff.
Well, that's one thing that we need to definitely, so you, you've got a hundred feet in there.
Yeah, so originally.
Okay, that's, that's.
Currently it's seventy-five, um, when Jeff Lacy originally reviewed stuff and sent it out to us. As well as, you know, Conway and stuff, he suggests is going to a hundred. So we've discussed a hundred and it seemed like we. Were in agreement about a hundred, but then you sort of raised the question about, should we have anything at all? So I think that's sort of the question at hand, um.
And, and I thought, for some reason, I thought that the, uh. The latest draft or whatever didn't have any, like it was. Well, yeah, so, um, i- i- is it, does anyone, um, object to having a hundred feet? Does anyone think we should not restrict it or think we, you know, should keep seventy-five or whatever we have now?
Fine, fine with a hundred.
Okay. What's, what, can somebody articulate the rationale? It's a, it's a maximum of a hundred feet, is that? Right.
Yeah, I, I think, I mean, thinking you're probably speak to it because he's got the historical perspective, but I think the idea was. If you're gonna build an accessory, a separate, you know, because you're gonna have an accessory within the structure, but if you had a separate. Um, structure that was the ADU, that you wanted to have it with some proximity to the primary dwelling unit. Um, so that, you know, if you're on a big acre or not, I mean, there are practical considerations. You still have to have septic and water and electricity, so. You know. I'm guessing people are gonna want to save money and not run huge lines of anything on back into the woods, but.
And, and driveways.
Yeah, so in that regard, I think there's practical realities and it would, but that, my sense is historically is like. Can you, similar to open space design, where we're trying not to sort of. Cut down things that don't have to be cut down and create micro sprawl, um, that this would be sort of consolidated. Deacon, did I get that right?
Yeah, and I, I, I would say, um, you know, some of the lots go way back. Um, you, you'd have, I mean, you can have a house that's a hundred feet from the road, but. But you don't, they might have property that goes back a thousand feet or two thousand feet. And you don't want them putting it in the, um, forest conservation district especially.
Right.
Yeah, I, I.
Hundred feet is real reasonable.
Yeah, I, I think a hundred feet's fine. Um, is, is there a provision, um? I assume with most of the stuff we do, there's a provision for them to get a special, to, to get a waiver or a special permit if they needed for some. Exceptional reason that the way their lot was configured or, uh, that if there was a need to go a hundred and fifty feet. That. We could review that or is this a hard and fast?
Well, currently, they can do this by right, so they, they don't need any approval. So the question I. Uh, this would be my guess, if they wanted to do something that was a hundred and fifty feet, it'd probably trigger. A special permit. I don't know what the, like, I don't know if. You know, Deacon or Nathan might know better, like, automatically, if they want to do something that's not by rate, does that mean that it has to be a special permit? Um. I guess we could be more proactive and, you know, put something in there that says. Any, anything not complying with the section would require a special permit. I don't, but I don't know if that's necessary or not.
Yeah, you know, that's, uh. That's a good point, um. You know, if, 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 uh. You know, you could get a variance, um, if it was related to the, uh. The shape of the lot or, uh, you know, there. So if, if it meets the criteria for granting a variance, you could do that. Um. There may be other kind of.
That would be a ZBA deal.
Yes, yes, it would, um. But if you wanted to do it for a reason that didn't, uh. Wasn't there for a variance, I mean, we could put that in, um. I'm not overly worried about it, to be honest, um, but, uh. Uh, I, and we could have it as a, um. A question for Donna and, uh. You know, if we get a good answer on it, we can, we can make that tweak, uh. After our public hearing.
I think, Nathan, this version maybe doesn't have the hundred because we edited it out. But I'm, I'll just make a note here to put it back in because I have the language from the other versions we looked at.
Oh, um, okay.
I'm just looking for it, I don't see it, so I can just double-check.
Um, okay. I saw a hundred-foot reference somewhere in here is, is.
A little lower.
Lower?
Uh, oh, you just. You just went past it.
What number is or letter is?
It's, uh.
Oh, yeah, there it is.
Six.
Yeah, got it.
Yeah.
Oh, great, okay. Makes you feel better. Okay, cool.
And now, Michael, uh, wh- while you're at it, you're gonna put the, uh, the as of date back in if we're gonna do it with a hundred feet.
Uh, as of whatever.
Within a, with, uh, within a garage or barn or other accessory structure as of, uh, the day of town meeting, right? Well, you know, so, uh, April twenty, is April twenty?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, yeah. Yeah, okay. Sounds fun, okay, perfect.
Yeah.
Um, so just to. Do the high-level stuff I, I wanted to cover, um. And this is almost, uh, entirely the same as, uh, everything we've been looking at for the last several months, right, uh?
Yeah, it's only the green, the green is the only new stuff.
Yeah, um.
Everything else is the same.
Right.
And we took, and we took out, we took out the. And you mentioned about the short-term rentals, that was, that was an omission, but that was new language anyway, um.
So the, what's this? Yeah, four point two dash, uh. Four point two dash two B one, um. So this is a section of the bylaw that deals with, uh. Dimensional requirements for accessory units. And then there's the, the other kind of section is, uh, you know, six point one and six point two. And, uh. The, I think that without, um, making certain, these certain changes to these sections. Those two sections were gonna conflict, right? Because. Initially, we are just referencing, uh, six point one and six point two, and that deals with the non-conforming structures. And, uh, this section four point two dash two says, you know, you can't, uh, any accessory structures need to comply with setbacks. And section six point one says that, you know, this has to. You know, comply with other rules and regulations, including in this bylaw, right? So. They, you know, they kind of just, um. Made it somewhat, uh. Contradictory, but I think, I think this takes care of it, you know, it'll be, it's with Donna to look at. And we'll be able to incorporate any feedback from Donna, either, you know, in the public hearing or. Even after it, we can incorporate, uh. Uh, legal review, so. I, I think that sums it up. Um, so now what we need to do is just, uh, I don't know if. Does anyone want to look at the, um, tiny houses amendment or? Yeah.
Yeah, I'll get it up in a second here. When I'm on Zoom for town, my computer is slower than every other way.
Yeah, I've got it up, Mike, I can, uh. Oh, it's gonna. You, I, I can request sharing, Michael, if you want.
Um.
Are you there?
Yeah, I'm not in it, um, um, here you go. There you go, did I see it?
Not yet.
Are you sharing too, Michael?
Yeah.
Oh.
I featured it, we're gonna only share it one time, so whoever showed up. You seeing it yet?
Yep.
Okay. Oh, I had a. I did have a question, I noticed, because I was, Nathan, what I ended up doing earlier today was I updated. The use table, so it looked like you had wanted, you know, with the grid.
Mm-hmm.
So all of these are site plan review by the ZBA. The question, I thought, for the group, which I noticed is that. Um, we're allowing it by site plan review in rural residential, um, FC and town center. But I don't know if it was my omission or if we decided, I don't know what we decided about La Coya or tiny houses. Did we make a decision and I just didn't capture it, or did we punt and we haven't discussed it? I don't, can't remember.
Oh, you're gonna put tiny, you, tiny houses in the use table?
Yeah, you have to. That was the idea, was creating a, a separate use.
Okay.
I guess we don't have to, I guess we could just. Define it as a, it just has to be defined as a dwelling. Um, I guess we don't have to put it in there, um. Yeah, it's, it's a good question, actually. Anyone have an opinion?
I have a couple of typos.
By, by defining it as a separate dwelling, uh, uh, is, is there a way to. Underline the fact that this dwelling can be. Uh, four hundred square feet or less, and there's a separate category than a, uh, ADU.
Well, that was, that was the whole idea of creating, so. Just a little backstory, you know, I sent this to Furcog. To the woman there who's sort of the planning expert, and she came back and said. You don't even have to do this because now that it's in the state building code, it's already covered. And when I wrote back and I talked to Nathan and. My experience is. Of people who live in this world, whether it's planning or not. You know, when I was at school committee, they said the same thing. You don't have to say that because, you know, it's part, part of state policy. No one looks at state policy, and especially this one, you can't barely find this one. So what I, the, the reason I think we should have it is. We're not creating anything new, but we're making it upfront and center for people so that if they actually want to consider it. They can find it, they can easily know what it is, um, and. You know, what the requirements are. And the way it plays out, I think this is the, the bottom part here. Is, this is, the black is the definition that is in the state, um, building code at this point. And I added the red basically to say, it's consistent with the specifications of the building code. And unless otherwise defined by the building code, this is what it is. So if the state all of a sudden, in two, five, ten years, changes the definition. The state is gonna, um. Rule on this, you know, it's gonna override whatever we have, but. It's a way of someone easily going to and saying, oh, this is what that is. And to Robert, your point. Um, you know, the definition is very clear of what it is, four hundred square feet, et cetera, et cetera. Um, so. The definitions, I think, is important, um. Most of this is just sort of restating some stuff that's already there, um, you know, like D and E are things that. Are more shoots very specific, and I guess the use table. It's not a different use in the sense that it's a dwelling. Um, you know, but in the use table, we have a single-family dwelling, we have a multiple, multiple family dwelling, so this seems like, and we have an ADU. So all of those are already uses, residential uses, it seems like it would be, make sense to have this be. Another kind of residential use, um, I don't think it hurts anything, just clarifies. So that was, that was my thinking, just making a clarif- a clarifying document for anyone at town that wants to go there.
Yeah, I think that clarity is really important. Want the typos, Michael?
They're up?
You want the typos?
Yeah, why you want me?
Um, C, it tiny home should be tiny house.
Oh, yes, thank you.
And, uh, and then D, you probably wanna capitalize house.
Uh, spell house right first. Okay. Anything else? Oh, I like that. Make my day, Deacon. Okay, so I'll stop sharing.
I, I just have one comment, um. I, I think, uh, it, it's clear from our definition, if a tiny house is built on a movable trailer, and that movable trailer is attached to a fixed foundation, it is acceptable.
Yes. So like someone could take something that was originally designed to be movable, as long as it's permanent and on a foundation, that it would be acceptable, yeah. So it can't be these things. Um, and so the question would be, um, you know, like a camper or something, you know, so that, that has wheels, um, or your traditional mobile, you know, mobile home kind of thing. If it has wheels, it'd have to be out of permanent structure, but yeah.
Which is the interesting part of the Nantucket bylaw definition, which starts out, it's a a tiny home is built on a movable trailer, which most of them have been, but attached to a fixed foundation. So the, the, um, way it's built can be the usual way, but that has to be attached to a fixed foundation.
Is that, is that, is that covered in what we have or no?
Yeah, so it has to be on a, and again, this is all state, state regs at this point in terms of what the definition is. But I, I'll just read you the definition rather than put it back up again, but, um, uh, if I can get to it, um, the definition is a tiny house is an attached structure containing a dwelling unit with a maximum of four hundred square feet of habit or living space excluding loss, et cetera, et cetera, um, and no more than fifteen feet in height that is connected to electricity, water, septic or septic, and on a fixed foundation intended, intended for residential use. So the requirement is that it, regardless of that was originally designed, it has to be attached, attached to a fixed foundation. So I guess hypothetically, someone could come in with a, you know, a mobile home with wheels, put it on a foundation, but it has to be connected to all the other stuff. So I'm hard pressed to think someone's gonna, you know, they might swap it out for something at some point, but you know, if you're gonna put in septic, electric and water, um, connected this thing on a foundation, it's, it's not like they're rolling in for, you know, six months and rolling out, which is, I think, what we're, people were trying to avoid.
And, you know, I want to clarify one thing, you know, earlier when we were talking about short term rentals, Michael, I think you mentioned, uh, manufactured homes. And
Yeah.
Well, those are not currently permitted in the bylaw or in any of these amendments. You've had a, a definition for modular homes.
Yes. No, so hold on, let me get there. It's, it gets confusing, um, that's for sure.
It's confusing. It is confusing.
So the old, the old language used to be mobile homes, and mobile home language is out, and uh, goodness, I keep losing my files here. This is crazy. Um. Okay, here we go. So the definition, it's a modular dwelling unit, um, is a pre-designed dwelling unit assembled and equipped with internal plumbing, electrical, similar systems prior to movement to the site where such development unit is affixed through a foundation and connected to external utilities in any portable structure with walls, a floor, roof designed, or used as a dwelling unit, transportable in one or more sections and affixed to the foundation. So I think it's a, it's one. It's a modular dwelling unit, it's a package supposed to a manufactured dwelling unit, but this is the language that the state had, um, so.
Well, but yeah, so but this is a we, what, you know, like, the whole mobile homes, you know, out thing, like, mobile homes turned into manufactured homes.
Yeah, yeah.
Just, I mean, you know, it's, it's just worth clarifying because it's, uh, it's confusing. And I kinda tell you what the difference is between a, a modular home and a manufactured home. I mean, I think a modular home is more like a what you think of as a proper home. It's just built in sections in a fact, in a factory and moved on site instead of being built on site, where a manufactured home i- is, I think, you know, it's not so much a mobile home, you know, there's all these different, you know, there's different standards now, but I think it's uh, it's more, it's more like a trailer, I think. I think you can move it on a trailer. It doesn't have to be, you know, you can like move it on a trailer and set it down somewhere and kind of set it up, and it doesn't have to be necessarily affixed to a, a foundation per se, maybe, um, but you know, I guess, I, I just wanted to clear up any confusion about that, um. You know, if for what it's worth.
Yeah. I think that there is confusion. I think that's exactly right. Um, I think the shortest version is mobile homes became manufactured homes, and what the difference between those two is beyond us.
And, and FERCOG just sent out a whole thing that says, uh, we, you know, to the region that says we should consider allowing manufactured homes, uh, you know, in the bylaws and everything like that, but, uh, right now, that's not for discussion, so we don't have to talk about it anymore. Next, what we do when you talk about is just, uh, last thing with bylaws is just the mechanics now. I think unless anyone else has anything, any questions, concerns, uh, you know, we will have an opportunity to make, you know, some minor edits and tweaks to it, um, after we have a public hearing. Um, but right now, we're, we're gonna more or less finalize these, these two drafts that we've seen and, uh, you know, technically, we'll submit them to the select board, uh. But we're also gonna talk about setting up public hearing day.
So Nathan, looking at the calendar, if, if we're to you know, I think our next meeting would be a little bit too, I mean, we could do it, but it seems a little tight. Um, we could do it on the fourteenth, which is our regu- our next regular meeting, um. And we could write a report.
Yeah, I know, uh, if, if the, the hearing, i- it's okay for the hearing to be kind of close, I guess, um. If there was any changes after the typically, we put the entire draft of the bylaw changes on the warrant for zoning.
Yeah.
Is that, I don't know if that's, uh, is that required by law?
Um, I think it's a covering R S. I don't know if it's actually, um, it's, you know, what the H E, when the H E told us that, you know, when they rejected our solar bylaw, and we didn't include the map, they said it was because the voters didn't know what they were voting for, cuz we didn't have the map.
Yeah.
So I think by having the full text in the warrant, there's no way that a voter would not know what they were voting for, because it would be on the warrant that they supposedly were voting for or against.
Okay, so when does the, when does the select board finalize the warrant?
Uh, I think it's like fourteen, I mean, legally, I think it's fourteen days before town meeting, which, um, would be the twelfth, you know, they're not gonna do it on a Saturday, so you figure like the eleventh, um. And we haven't mailed, I don't think we've mailed out a hard copy in a while, um, but maybe we will, if not, it's gonna get posted. Um, but if we did a, if we did the hearing and we maybe had our regular meeting on the seventh as opposed to the fourteenth, we could definitely get them. I'm guessing, my, my hunch is that they would finalize the warrant on the eighth, which, you know, unless they had a special meeting, but the eighth is a Tuesday, that, that'd be my hunch.
Okay.
Oh, hey, why am I talking? Melissa's here.
Uh, I did, that, that occurred to me. Melissa, are you there?
Guess when we needed her. She wasn't here.
Melissa? All right, well, you know, um, I mean, that sounded pretty, uh, pretty good to me, Michael, um. You know, unless we go for, uh, like March thirty first or something. Which.
I don't know if we can do March thirty first in terms of noticing the hearing.
Oh, right, right, cuz it's already the, uh, tenth.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right. And you know, you know what, though, I, I'm I, you know, if, if putting the language up there is kind of a cautionary thing, I think we can probably, uh, you know. You know, if the warrant's already done by the time we put stuff up there, we'll, we'll get stuff up, uh, stuff to the select board before you know, the hearing, just so they have it if they need it, and then, um, you know, if we have tweaks, we can explain that, um. We can figure it out.
Yeah, what I was gonna say for all, if everyone's good with it, is based on this conversation tonight, what I would send to, um, the town administrator, town clerk and the select board is the three amendments that we're, we're suggesting with the language we discussed. So there's tiny houses, there's ADUs, and then there's the very simple, um, deleting section, Article seven, which is the growth one. So I can send it to them, so they'll have it now. Rita told me they'll start thinking about um, all the warrant articles soon. So my guess is, if they have it in the hopper, you know, and if you remember, we have to send it to them, they don't do anything with it, but then they've got notified, so though, if they have it this week, that should be sufficient, and I'm assuming any changes that we make after the hearing will not be huge, so it should be easy to make, um, you know, in a word document, get to them by the next day.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, um. One thing I would say too is if, if we do need to make huge changes, it can always be on the town meeting floor.
Yeah. And I'll just start by, I'll just start by plugs. Nathan won't be there, so if anyone wants to come up front and stand with me as I describe these things, welcome to company.
Yeah, that's, uh, I've been meaning to mention that to everyone, so I'm glad you brought that up. My, uh, my regrets, but I have a you know, good friend, uh, getting married and asked me to do the honors of officiating their wedding, so I, I will not be around Chutesbury on, uh, April twenty sixth.
Is that because of your experience as a planning board head?
It is, they, they took it to one of the meetings here, they were just blown away.
That's what I was thinking.
Okay, so I'd like to hear, uh, a motion that, um, will refer these, uh, amendments, uh, as discussed, um, this evening to the select board, uh, for that procedural step, and that we will, uh, take action to post public legal notice for a a public hearing on these, uh, amendments for what was it?
April seventh?
At, uh, seven o'clock.
I'm moved.
Seconded.
Any, any last minute discussion? Call the roll, uh, Raymond?
Aye.
Tycroft?
Aye.
Weston?
Aye.
Takeara?
Aye.
Bonner?
Aye.
And I'm gonna, all right, great. It's good. This, uh, important aspect of tonight's meeting, uh, all set, so, um. Excellent. Thanks, everyone.
Uh, Nathan, could you repeat the date again? What, what date was that?
Uh, April, uh, seventh.
April seventh? So, um, we're gonna meet on April seventh.
That's right.
Okay, great.
No trips to the Midwest, Jeff.
And there is also a meeting on April fourteenth, or, or, or no?
Hopefully not, Robert. Hopefully not. But everyone behaves. Now, you know, um, we might need to do a, an off-cycle meeting here to, cuz obviously, it's been a little crazy and, uh, you know, agenda items have kind of, uh, gone on and, you know, we could we could use a an off-cycle meeting just to catch up on some paperwork, but, uh, I don't know, I think well, yeah, I mean, cuz, you know, right now, it's already eight twenty-three, and we have two special permit decisions, uh, we're looking at right now. So, uh, i- if not, uh, if not on the fourteenth, and possibly, possibly before. But let's, uh, cross that bridge when we get there. Next on our agenda, we're gonna do the key special permit decision. Thank you, Michael.
You're welcome. Anything you wanna focus on in particular? He's drafting this, right?
Yeah, and the, so the, uh, first start off with the highlighted part, the, uh, the, the version of the, the zoning, uh, bylaw that I have, which I took off the town website, uh, the latest version is that as amended June twelfth, twenty twenty-one. And I just highlighted that to confirm that what is posted on the town website is the most recent version.
We've got a new version, I think, that went up this week that, uh, Mateo and you know, Fosher and Grace worked on.
Did he put up, did he put up the new version, Michael?
I'm pretty sure I, I got a, I didn't look on the website, but I got a whole bunch of emails saying that it was up, so I can look right now. But they, the yeah, the, the challenge with this stuff is, um,
No, it's
huh, weird.
Yeah, I, I think, um, he, so, you know, ma- I reached out to, to Grayson and Mateo on this, and, uh, and Michael, for that matter, but, um, Grace kind of came back and said, hey, you know, I, I had an issue with my computer a few years back, some stuff got wiped or, or whatever, and, you know, something happened with the bylaw version that's in Word and all the formatting got all wonky or, or something like that, um. And then, uh, you know, some time went by and, you know, Mateo kind of came back and said, hey, I've got this Word document version of it, and, you know, we can, uh, you know, made some adjustments based on the most recent meetings, and we, we had a little bit of back and forth, uh, just to get it right, and then he said, okay, now go ahead and. Just to get it right, and then he said, okay, now go ahead and. Work on the formatting, because there were some formatting issues with the document in terms of, uh. You know, where all the headings were and, you know, kind of. That technical formatting stuff, and, uh, I hadn't heard anything from him since, but, uh. Long story short, uh, it's in the works if it hasn't already been done, and, uh. Obviously, that'll be good to have a current version of the bylaw on our website. Yeah, and I guess it comes, so the language, actually, before I move down. Under findings where it says, uh, blah, blah, after visiting the site, and I've got in parentheses, Murphy Deck, go, no, 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 go back, go back down. Murphy, Decare, and Hasty, I think, did Tom go out with you, Michael?
Yeah, yeah.
We needed to add Tom's, uh, Murphy, Decare, Seaford, and Hasty. Oxford comma, yeah, thank you.
I, I don't know what it is, but I know I can do it.
One of my, one of my few real pet peeves. Um, and then, alright, so scroll down, so the, the, I guess the reason I wanted to be confident is the version of the bylaw we're, we're citing. Is that I think. Wasn't there some language under these, um, criteria that changed from one version to another?
Oh, yeah, we should, so, yeah, so they got approved. In, I mean, it was the two thousand twenty-four, so last town meeting, they got approved. By town meeting and the AG supported them, so it was all prior, so it should be the two thousand twenty-four version of the bylaws for that very reason.
Okay, so then we need to change that highlighted. To the latest, because I didn't, this is the language that you had sent me, Michael. Which I didn't, I didn't have access to, so.
Yeah, and I worked off of that, let me just see what the date is, I'm sorry, uh.
You're gonna say town of, uh, well, yeah.
There we go. Well, yeah, it, it's, it's April. April two thousand twenty-four, we can say.
Yeah. April twenty-seventh.
Thank you, teamwork.
Yeah. Yeah, we gotta get a Word document out to everyone, because it's gonna be nice to have.
Going to state in the general findings.
Yeah, I mean, that was just cut and paste out of what you sent, I think, so, um. Scroll down, there was one other thing. Where was it that I typed in the votes? I was un, I was unsure what that, that previous meeting was, yeah, that, uh, the votes, obviously. Yeah, I was a little bit premature there, um. Because I think is tonight the actual vote? Yeah.
Yeah.
So, we can modify that as necessary. We do, right, are we only missing, uh, Steven at this point?
Yeah, for full membership, yeah.
Okay. Then the, the, tonight, the date, uh, under the votes, well, yeah, but that one too.
Uh, oh, here, okay.
Wait, one more, all the way to the bottom, that highlighted should be twenty twenty-five.
Got it.
Or twenty twenty-four, I'm sorry, right, when the, uh.
Oh, twenty-four, right, I got, yeah, thank you.
Alright, the rest is up to you guys. And does anyone else, uh, uh, anyone else look at this or have anything they want to add to it?
My eyesight's failing me a little, I can't tell if my name is spelled right or wrong. It's supposed to be AR.
Oh, no, so your eyesight is good.
Yeah, sorry, Deacon, that's on me.
It's, it's a really, it happens all the time.
Mine's right. I, you know. This one is, it seems very straightforward, I'm, I'm personally content with just sort of confirming that the. The findings were compliant, um, but if anyone wants to go through any of these, I could.
You know, we could, uh, the condition, uh, we might, uh, modify the language of the condition to kind of, uh, make it a little bit more firm. Something like, uh. You know, the applicant must, uh, you know. Obtain any, uh, obtain necessary approvals, uh. From the Conservation Commission, uh, prior to. Beginning work on the project, um. Violation of the, uh, Chutesbury Wetlands, uh. Protection by law. Would, uh, be considered, uh, you know, so constitute a violation of this permit.
So you think this right here doesn't suffice?
And it says it's, uh.
I don't think we're allowed.
Oh, oh, yeah, you know what, yeah, yeah, that, no, I, I missed that, um. Yeah, I, I, I got stuck on the box up above and, uh, didn't realize that that was a part of it, so my, that's my bad. Yeah, no, that's good, actually, yeah, that's, uh, that's exactly what I want to see, so, perfect. Alright, um, anything else? Alright, let's, uh.
That's, Deacon, is there stuff that you usually put in, like, I mean, everything has to get filed, so hypothetically, we'll find out about it. Um, is there, is there any other things that usually get put in there for conditions? If it's a straightforward kind of thing?
I think this covers it.
Cool.
Yeah, yeah, okay, um. And, uh, I think, you know, I think, uh. We, we cause it to be, uh, recorded, right, in the registry of deeds for a special permit. And then, you know, they, they.
The applicant files it.
I think. Well, I mean, we don't have to figure that out now, but, uh. I think for a special permit, I don't know, I thought that we did too, but there was something I was reading, uh, that I thought. Said that we had to do it, um, and that the applicant would, would pay the fee, but that we would do it.
We need the case number, right? Mateo can do that.
Um. Yeah, Mateo can, uh. Well, we, we have a case number, right?
Do you know what it is?
I can. You know. It was in the minutes.
Why don't we just, I mean, we can just give it to Mateo, he can fill in.
Yeah, no, I know, but we, we'll just, uh. It says, uh, oh, that's the serious. Alright, you know, I, uh. Yeah, we'll, we'll go to Mateo, I thought, I thought, I thought we had it there, but it doesn't look like it, so. Okay. Um, alright, I'll, I'll call. Let's, let's hear a, uh. A motion.
I'll move to approve the special permit for. Peter Gies, um. For the project. Uh, let's see, what's the address? Twenty-nine Highland Drive. Book zero six four eight two, page two oh five, um. I think that's all we need, right?
I think so. Alright, that's.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any, uh, further discussion? I'll, uh. Check in with Mateo and, uh, I'll go in and sign this thing Thursday. Alright, um. I'll call the roll, Raymond.
Aye.
Um, Pecroft. Was that I, I mean.
Aye.
That's not, okay, um, Weston.
Aye.
Excellent, uh, Takeara.
Aye.
Um, Bonner.
Aye.
And I'm an I. And that does it, that's good. That's good to wrap that up. Thank you, everyone. Was, uh, is somebody gonna, Michael, you could update the vote section, okay?
Yeah. We seconded, Ashley seconded, right?
Yeah. Okay. Um. Serious, uh, special permit decision. After our last meeting, we didn't, uh. Figure out who is gonna take a stab at it, but I don't know if anyone's, uh. Hello, Linda. Um.
I did say, uh, hello.
Mic is off.
Maybe we should see YouTube, that mic doesn't do it for good.
So, this, uh. You know, I don't necessarily expect that we're gonna be able to. More or less come up with a, uh, a decision right here, but we should. At least start to, uh, discuss some of, uh. You know, what we, what we have with this, I mean, has anyone spent a substantial amount of time reviewing? Uh, everything for this?
Well, I had. An idea that I shared with Nathan about it in just terms of, I mean. I think there's, you know, just to briefly summarize, on the one hand, the applicant. Was saying that, you know, the new installation, they were pretty confident would not make noise, and then the butters. Was concerned that they experienced noise at the previous one and wanted to have some assurances that if we approve this one. It wouldn't be the same kind of noise, and so, I mean, my thinking was. Since we can't really model it before it gets built, the question is creating a. Mechanism in the conditions whereby if it makes unreasonable noise, that operations have to cease. So it's like, go ahead, build it, if everything plays out the way expectations are and it's quiet, no complaints and everything's good. Um, so, you know, I looked at. The, the state noise pollution definition, um, which is with DEP. Um, has three parts to it, it says, noise pollution is defined as causing a nuisance, that's the first one. Being interest or to be on the basis of current information potentially interest to human or animal life to vegetation or property. And then C is unreasonably interfere with the comfortable enjoyment of life or property. Or the conduct of business, so I think all those, those three things sort of. Address what the butters had talked about, um. You know, there's a DEP noise policy, which is one layer down from the regulation, and that has. A, a noise broadband level of more than ten decibels above ambient. Or produces a pre-tonic condition, which I think is more technical than. Um. We would want, so what I, what I was thinking is that, um. We could approve it and then write in something, what I suggested was that, um. Where does my suggestion go? Um. If a resident, you know, probably in the butter, um, reports at least twice over a two-month period, but no more frequently than once a week. To the Chutesbury Police, Police or Board of Health, that noise generated by the turbine does not comply with DEP noise regulation. Uh, nine ninety dash zero zero one, um. And the sound can be defined as noise pollution per three ten CMR seven dot ten, which is the, um, regulation. The owner and or operator will suspend operation of the turbine, turbine until modifications are made to the satisfaction of. The regulation as determined by the Board of Health. Or DPA, IDP at the Board of Health's request. So it's basically tying it to the noise pollution definition of the state and locally either. You know, the triggering event is, we could talk about like, you know, how many reports and how frequently, I thought. You know, we don't want to create a thing where every week someone's calling in and complaining, uh, but you want to have some kind of consistency, so. It seemed like it could be seasonal and temperature-wise, you know, there could be variations, so there could be one reason. Where it's really, you know, the conditions are such that you hear the noise, and then maybe the next week it's fine. Um, but then it pops up again, and you know, the idea would be, if there's some regularity, one could assume that. It's an ongoing noise, if it happens one month and it doesn't hap, doesn't happen for another three or four months, you know. I don't think that falls into noise pollution, it's, it's more the, the regular constant state, uh, so that was my thinking about it.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I was gonna say, I have a question, is it possible to, um. Stop the ro, I assume it's possible to stop the rotation from down below, you, you, you somehow press a button and it stops the, uh. The blade from rotating, I don't know if that's possible or not, setting up these wind turbines.
Uh, uh, I just, uh, Rick just told me, yes, that is possible.
It has a furling mechanism, you just crank it down and it shuts it down.
Okay. Thank you.
I think, my thinking behind this, sorry, I was just wanted to finish up, Jeff, was that. This way we don't put the brakes on the project, you know, they've already had, you know, a decade plus of delays, so. It's clear that they would like to get under the wire with national grid, so if we can approve it. But at the same time, give a butters the ability to say, if this in fact turns out to be noisy, that there's a way of suspending it. Um, so it seems like that sort of begs the needle a little bit.
Yeah, I, I was thinking of, uh. You know, having a, a condition, um. At the very least that you'd be able to, uh. Uh, turn, turn the thing off, um, which we just heard he could, um. You know, something potentially further would be to, uh. You know, to require that it be done so if, uh. There's, you know, substantial winds or something like that, but that, I think that's a little bit tough, um, to do reasonably. Without creating an undue burden or something like that, but, um.
And that might be episodic, like of a high wind event, it might just be, everyone knows if it's really, really windy. Um, and, but I think, you know, that can address last time, looking at the minutes, that they, above. Twelve KW, I think it turns off automatically. Or winds of thirty-five miles an hour.
Okay.
Yeah, it turns off at thirty-four miles an hour, it furls itself. And at thirty-four miles an hour, I doubt anyone will hear it with the wind through the trees. It's, I mean, that's pretty much a howling wind through the trees, it's much louder than the winter.
Rick, when, when the wind changes direction. Um, and you're talking about that in the hearing, uh, when it changes direction and the, and the. Uh, the turbine will, uh, rotate with the direction of the wind, what was that motion called?
Okay, what happens is it yaws with the wind. And you have a two-blade, which is what the old wind turbine was, the old wind turbine had. Quite loud blades to begin with, that's a very old one. Uh, if you have two blades, as it tries to turn, it turns too much and the blade hits the wind and it makes a chattering noise. And that might be what they've been talking about, nobody does two blades anymore because that chattering also tears up the bearings. Well, the new one has three blades, so it doesn't have that. Has three blades, so it doesn't have that level of yod chatter, it's much, much, much less. And the old one has been converted to three blades. And it may have been running for a while and I'm not sure they noticed it, but. I'm going to rebuild that one, that one's going to be there anyway. That one is actually louder than the one we're putting in. Considerably in fact. But it's gonna be a lot quieter with the three blades on it, it'll also stop tearing its bearings out. So once I get that rebuilt. Now that one will be much quieter, and that's the only part I could think of that they heard, is the thing turns at about three, four hundred RPM. But it'll go chatter, chatter, chip, flop, 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 flop. As it moves so quickly, but when it turns into the, the wind, as the wind changes direction with the two blade. Then the chattering noise can sound like. So, that's all I can tell you.
All right, the, the question I'm trying to get at is uh. If, if the thing is furled, uh, is it still going to have yaw with the, the change of uh wind or is that?
No, it's furled, it doesn't make that noise. The blades slow way, way, way down, they basically don't rotate anymore. Okay, so if it's furled, it stops making noise. If it was really an issue. I can always go up the tower and tie the blade down. Which is what you do if you're gonna shut it down for a long period of time, you just go up there and you tie the blade to the tower, you tie the tail down. And it just sits there, it just doesn't do anything. It's sort of what I have to do if I have to go up and do maintenance on it. It's like climb up some and I tie them down. It's one of my favorite things to do, but you know, it's part of the job.
So the turbine, if it's uh, if it's furled, it, it won't rotate in the wind?
No, it doesn't rotate, it'll, it'll turn on its axis, but the blade stops from. So it doesn't really make any noise, it just sort of sits there.
It turns on its axis?
What's that?
It, it still turns on its axis?
It turns on its axis, but it doesn't make any noise, and in fact. The neighbors said that, you know, they haven't heard this one since it's broken. Well, the old one, which was quite loud, that's sitting up there, it just doesn't turn, cause the bearings are shot. But it turns on its axis, but the blade doesn't spin, it's the spinning of the blade that can make noise.
Pete? No, I, I was just gonna, I think we're getting confusion between the blades rotating and the unit itself rotating. With the wind direction. We, we were, but I think that that was uh. I think he just clarified it. I think, yeah. Yeah, okay, that's, that's, that's good.
Um, interesting on the picture too, it's like I have a dark side and a white side.
Hmm. Alright, so we've got uh some ideas for the uh. Is anyone ta, taking notes on this? Does, does anyone wanna volunteer to kind of uh put this in, in writing it for a decision?
Michael, you're muted.
There we go. I just put up the geez one, cause these are all the specific conditions, so it might prompt someone to. Have a thought, cause these are all, these are all the ones that would have to. Um, be addressed anyway in the writing up.
That's good.
I'm just gonna get this, so Rick, for number three, you said there was a road that goes up to the tower.
Yeah, yes, there is a road that goes up there now.
Okay, that's.
He asked me, we have to get a big crane up there to put it up.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just thinking about answering these questions, so the answer would be yes, um. I think five is where we would. Put some kind of something. To say that there's been, you know. Reports, you know, this is, whatever we write here would be the basis for the condition. It seems like.
Yeah.
Doesn't seem like there's any visual amenities that are problem, cause it's set back into the, the parcel, uh, there's no traffic congestion. Uh. And I think the only other thing that would be worth it, just getting an affirmative answer is, it, it doesn't seem like. Even though it's electrical, there's no unreasonable risk of fire more than anything else, it's electrical, it's just. Sitting in the woods.
Yeah, I'm, I'm moving with that.
Um. It seems like the footprint is such that there's no real negative impacts. The. Land around it in terms of. These things here.
Right, yeah, and you know, the uh. The uh concrete pad is already built.
If I were to, I'm not volunteering to write it, but if I were to chime in, I think it's really just sort of documenting the noise concerns and then putting the, some condition in there. Everything else is. You know, we can answer affirmatively. In regard to everything else, it seems like. My two cents.
Yeah, so I don't know if you'd put it under general, general findings or specific findings, right, but we, we'd say, yeah. Uh, during the, you know, the special permit hearing, we received testimony from. Uh, several residents indicating that they've uh.
Several, three.
You know, experienced unfavorable noise conditions during operation of uh. Of wind turbine that was operated in the past. Would, would, would we, I don't think, would we have to put that in the permit, or would we just write the conditions to address? That would be, that would be in the findings, yeah. So that's part of our findings from our, our hearing is. That uh, butters have come forward to state that they're uh. Okay. About the noise, that, that, that there was a, a turbine um, operating in the past that uh. You know, they, they stated. You're creating noises, I don't like uh. Like mash. Beside your window, right, and um. You know, so they had all that, you know, concerns about, you know, that, that they've. They said that due to turbine operation in the past, that they experienced a significant amount of disturbance based on the noise created. Um. You know, that's, that's a finding. Right? Um.
And I think that if. With that finding, that establishes the fact that, you know, if we put in a condition, like, like, for example, if we adopted the one I was suggesting. That it wouldn't be capricious, so it's basically based on, you know, response.
Yeah, I, I just wasn't sure whether that would go in the permit, or that would just be, you would reference the public hearing. That that issue was. Brought up.
I, I think we should put it here, cause it's sort of, this is the document that goes forward, no one's gonna read the minutes.
Yeah, so what we can do is, you know, we can say uh. You know, we, we've, um. I don't know if you wanna maybe uh. You know, make like a sub bullet, like a five A, and note uh. And note that, or, you know, I guess maybe if uh. You know, this is the, this is not an actual draft of this, this is actually the geez decision here.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just. I'll make a draft right now, just so we can edit it based on what you're saying.
But, but you're not volunteering to do it?
I'm not, I was gonna volunteer, you're, Keith did a great job, but I don't wanna penalize him for doing a great job, um. And I know your brain works this way, Nathan, so, you know, but you're pressing the time.
There's gotta, there's gotta be a member of this board that will uh volunteer to, you know, um. Write uh. Oh, well, yeah, well.
I'm sorry, I just can't do it. I just can't do it, talk to me in ten years. Maybe.
We'll come back at you.
Um.
Keith, would you be willing to do it? Not to put you on the spot, but I am.
When, when do we need it?
Probably by April seventh?
Yeah.
Does that make sense, Nathan?
Oh, yeah, um. Unl, unless we uh, unless we meet for. Yeah, I, I'll do it. I won't be here for the April seventh meeting, but I'll, I'll have it to you all before then.
Oh.
And yeah, Michael, if. Actually, yeah, if you'd send me your language.
Yeah, I'll, I'll fut with this and I'll send it to you. Um. That'd be. If you're gonna do it, I'm happy to set it up.
We, we've got uh. Michael, Jeff. Tom and Keith. Myself. And Deacon. Right, we only had six people on us. So if, if Keith is not there. And Tom is there and everyone else that's here today shows up on April seventh will be good. But if we're short. Another person, then uh, we wouldn't have uh the sufficient votes. Uh, across that bridge, we get to it. Yeah.
Thank you, Keith, for volunteering.
Oh, was I volunteered or did I volunteer?
You said, I'll do it.
Yeah, I, I, I kinda knew where it was headed.
Thanks for your effort, Keith.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we'll, we'll reward you further at the end of April.
Uh huh. Yeah. Nice, I put in, I put in paperwork for an absentee ballot.
I need you to get everyone at the, the wedding to vote, Nathan.
I, I will, I'm gonna bring a little. Clicker system, so they can all just push the button and. Transmit it right to. Town hall. Um.
But do you want, so. In terms of restating, I'll put in the language that I suggested, if everyone's cool with that. I'll send it to Keith, Keith can write it up, and then he can send it to us to review before April seventh, and then we can approve it on April seventh. Assuming we wanna approve it, but.
Yeah, I think, I mean, you know, is there a? I mean, is there anyone that is uh? Is, would oppose approving, approving this? Okay. Yeah, I mean, I, I, I don't think we need to vote on it now, like, like we did with the, the geez permit, I, I kind of like to. More or less get a decision, I don't know, it's. Maybe six one, half dozen the other, but I think. You know, talking about getting the decision together and then uh, voting makes sense to me. So if that's the case, you know, these last two items uh. On the agenda are um. Community Preservation Committee, there's an update, I don't.
Excuse me?
And then it was a, oh, I'm sorry, uh, Linda?
I'm not understanding what you're deciding, are you standing to, deciding to put it off to April seventh, and then maybe you're not gonna have enough people on April seventh? Is that, I'm not. Clear what is being uh. What's being decided, or what you're, what you're.
Well, well, yeah, well, we, we decided, you know, we, we have somebody that is gonna uh. More or less uh, write the decision. And um. And then, yeah, we, we would vote on it on uh, on April seventh.
So, but you said something about men maybe not having enough people on April seventh, does that mean it would go even past that?
Um, potentially, but I, I, I anticipate that uh. We will have enough people.
Well, I'll just. Linda, I'll just say for your comfort level, if you, I, I don't know when you joined in, but we have to have a public hearing for bylaw amendments on April seventh. And that has to be publicly noticed, so there's a high pressure on us to have enough people. Who can vote and have a quorum for a public hearing, so the, if we're gonna do that for a public hearing, we'll have enough people to vote on this.
Okay, it's just, I mean, from my perspective, uh, this is the fifth meeting and. Yeah, just uh. Well, one of them, we didn't, it was too sort of notice, but just our timeline, as you well noted is. We have some constraints on that, so as soon as we can do it from our perspective, the. The better it's gonna be.
But, if I may. Uh. Would you say it might be a good idea for me to go put a deposit down on, on a crane? While I can still get one this year? Cause that's my, my constraint here, is that the cranes are all being taken away for all this huge expansion of the power lines. And it's kinda hard to get one, and I gotta get in line pretty soon. So, if you guys are feeling very positive about it, I'll go and risk, you know, the deposit on it.
No.
I think it'll give you a decision, but you know, if you give me a sense.
Rick, I, I, I uh. I can't uh. Make any promises uh, or any kind of uh. Suggestion as to what you should do with respect to renting a crane, I understand uh. You know, frustrations. Um.
No, it's just that if I don't get in line, it won't happen this year. National grid stuff will disappear too, and then a lot of ways we're back to square one, so that's why I'm. That's why I'm saying, I understand if you can't do it, just understand that I have to at least ask. Cause, you know, I'm gonna have to make up my mind what to do about this, and it's their money. But at the same time, it is my job to see to it, I don't waste their money. Well, you know, I have a huge risk here that I have to figure out what to build it, that's all. But, you know, if you can't do it, I understand you can't do it.
I just wanted to note for the record, I'll be there April seventh, but I'm abstaining from the serious matter because of uh, being on the board.
Right, yeah, you know, I um. Let's, let's just see, um, aside from Keith, uh, does anyone here know of any uh? Potential conflicts that they might have scheduled on conflicts for April seventh? Is everyone else good?
I can be there, but I'm not allowed to vote on this one either.
Right, no, yeah, I know that, I mean, it's, you know, like, obviously Tom is not here and he can't answer for it. Um, but I mean, we've got uh, Michael, Jeff and Deacon all are, are nodding that they'll be good for the seventh. Right, so that's uh, that's me, and then we just uh, would need uh. Need to make sure uh, Tom can uh be there, and he's usually available, I mean, we have no reason to expect that he wouldn't be able to. And. I'll tell you, if, if Tom comes back after tonight and says, no, I can't make April seventh, then. Uh. I'll, I'll do what I can to uh. To schedule another meeting where we can get a quorum. And review the decision and vote on it either. You know, shortly before or shortly after. Alright.
Thank you very much.
I mean, I understand that you're looking at, at um, issues here, and I, and I will also. Iterate that of the um. Of the, of the. Was that one, uh, two, three, no? Yeah, we got, we have four people here, um. That. Will be voting on this, and none of them have uh expressed any intent to oppose it. That's not to say someone couldn't change their mind, but I, I, I don't get this, you know, no one has expressed uh. Has come out and said that they would oppose it.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
We're gonna drop out of your meeting now.
Alright.
Have a good night.
You as well, thank you. Um. Look, I, I, I think we're gonna skip the uh, Community Preservations Committee and Lake Waila Advisory uh Committee, I, I put those on the agenda primarily out of a. Inquiry from, from Tom on those, um. Yeah, I can't speak to the, you know, I do have an update, an email, I'm not, probably just for that to everyone, and then uh. You know. I think Tom's interested in the uh, L W A, L W A Committee. Um. So something just to kind of think about is, is whether or not we may, might decide to uh, ask the select board to appoint him as the uh, planning board. Rep for L W A. Or if uh. If anyone uh feels strongly that we should advertise uh, to the public on that first before doing so. No one does? Alright, well, you know, that would be uh. So that's, that's great. I, I don't, I don't have any strong feelings about it.
I'm gonna make a quick motion about it and get it done.
Um. You know, I think that we should uh. It's been a vacant uh planning board designate for probably a matter of years, I think we can wait one more month and, and let Tom be here and just. Make sure he still wants to do it before. Probably a matter of years. I think we can wait one more month and, and let Tom be here and just make sure he still wants to do it before we do that.
Okay.
Um. But I appreciate, I appreciate the enthusiasm. I'll get stuff done. Uh, you know, for the, I have, uh, updates from, uh, chair and members and. I just want to note that, uh, Ashley and, uh. And Keith have both, uh, taken out papers. Uh, for open seats, uh, one, uh. So I want to wish them both best of luck. Uh, in their endeavors. I also. Uh, I want to note that Robert has let us know that he is not going to be seeking reelection and I want to thank Robert for. How, how long have you been on this board, Robert? I don't know when you first got on.
You're muted.
You, you're muted, Robert.
Uh, three terms.
Three terms, so. You know, nine years, uh, of service. So, uh. You know, I, I, I'm behalf of, uh, the board and, uh, you know, I'm, I'm gonna speak on behalf of, uh. The inhabitants of Schuetsberry, you know, thank you for. Uh, your service on this board, um, Robert, and, uh, you will be missed.
Well, I'm grateful to have been with you. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Robert.
Thank you. Thank you, Ashley and Keith.
That's right, yes. Um. Okay, I think, I think that's it. So, uh, I would. I would hear a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Who, who moved in, uh?
Robert will claim.
All right, Robert moves. Take care. Michael seconds. And, uh. Any discussion? Thank you, everyone. This is another, uh, another long one, but, uh, we. Did pretty well, um. I'll call the roll, uh, Packcraft?
Hi.
Take care.
Hi.
Weston?
Hi.
Raymond?
Hi.
Bonner?
Hi.
And, uh, I'm an I, um, meetings adjourned. Have a wonderful evening, everyone.
Thank you, Nathan. Michael, Keith, Ashley, good luck tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
I could never do, I, I taught for thirty seven years. I could never be on the planning board if I was teaching as well. So thank you so much, Ashley.
Thanks. It's all right.
Uh.
See y'all later.
All right, good night.
Night.